...arrive very often when you have a speaker where you can say this is somebody who needs no introduction and really, and really mean it. When I first suggested this as a possible idea to our speaker this afternoon, he leaped at it and said, gee, that's a good idea. I'd love to do that. So here to meet with you to make some brief opening remarks, but to answer any questions you might have, the president of Harvard University, Neil Rudenstein.
Thank you. When I said I'd love to do it, I didn't quite know what I was loving to do, and now I know what the forum is. I'm only going to say a few things about two or three topics, and I thought at that point we could simply open the floor, have questions and answers, an informal discussion, and probably get to things that you're concerned about more quickly that way. But maybe I can say a few things. The dean, I think, advertised me as speaking on the president's agenda for the university, the Kennedy School. The dean searched general issues of public policy and higher education. Two hours from now, I will probably stop and we can all go home. But I will do my best to hit each one of those, even if only briefly. Let me start with a sort of global picture and work my way down. I'm not quite sure what down is, but to the micro level anyway of the school. The global picture, higher education generally in the country. Basically, I'm a bit concerned. I'm not overly deeply worried, but I think, as I've said to a lot of audiences and a lot of people in conversation, this is not an easy time for higher education. And I don't mean only financially, though financially is one of the issues that we have to worry about. It just seems to be in general, and I think it probably seems to many of you as well, that observing higher education, let's say, from the Second World War to now, we can see that in the last 10 to 20 years, there's been a pretty, pretty clear decline or deterioration in the relationship between universities and a good deal of the rest of the society. To some extent, that's part of the government. To some extent, it's the perception of many, many people of higher education, universities, and so on. The reasons are different. Sometimes the actions are random. Sometimes higher education's perception of the rest of the society is part of the question at issue. Whatever way you want to look at it, it's less, simply less collaborative than it used to be, even though there were bumps in the road before. And one question I ask myself is, is this a more or less continuing situation that we cannot expect to see change in the future? Or is it something that is likely to oscillate, as things have oscillated in the past? I don't pretend to be a prophet. All I can say is that the fact that resources are scarcer, that there are really more things either to spend your money on or not to spend your money on, there are many, many urgent needs in the society that are, have a very strong claim on people's attention and therefore their resources. All of these things together put pressure on the whole system, on the university system, but on the country as a whole, and make it a question sometimes of perfectly honest and conscientious priorities amongst people as to where they should put their attention, where they should invest, as it were, whether it's human resources or financial resources or whatever. And I think higher education simply is getting less than it used to. Maybe that's how it should be, but from one point of view, it's not quite enough. Times are harder, and they look as if they'll remain harder. Other things, of course, are in the air, whether it's the question that universities are perceived more and more as the kinds of institutions that either the Justice Department or the Congress or whoever might like to investigate now or again, whether for antitrust on the student aid issue, whether for indirect cost problems with the House, whatever it may be, there are enough things that are problematic, volatile, that cause universities to perceive as being less, less scrupulous or less, if you will, different from other institutions in society and therefore in some sense more fair game than they used to be. And that's a change, whether it's our fault, whether it's simply the fact that conditions have changed, whether it's the fact that the government sees us differently, or all of the above, is an issue, but it's not a trivial issue. That, and we could go down the list, so-called political correctness, issues of diversity, the extent to which affirmative action and the mood about diversity in the country is shifting and in the Supreme Court and in the government is shifting, whereas inside the universities, whatever progress or non-progress we have made, I suspect that the attitude on the principle of the issue is not shifting as much, if at all. And that's the difference. So wherever we look, there are cracks and fragments and interstices that we need to worry about. So there's one large question about higher education in this future, and I'll just leave that on the table as something we can come back to later on if we want. What do I see for this university, other universities? Well, I think that from our point of view, we really have to try to do what we've been doing, and that is fundamentally to keep the quality as high as we can, to find the resources to keep it as high as we can, and therefore that means not just sustaining what we are, though that's pretty important, but trying to shift as we need to, to meet emerging issues, problems, intellectual and otherwise, in the years ahead, the next decade or two, or as well as we can predict. And what might some of those be? Well, in the Harvard context, I guess I see a few things. First, we are, as you know, a fairly decentralized institution at a time when we have an awful lot to gain from being able to collaborate and work together more if we can figure out ways in which to overcome some of the decentralization. The famous every tub on its own bottom system is not one that one can, or I think, easily shift, and there are good reasons for having it in part at least, i.e., it does guarantee a considerable amount of local self-government, as it were, autonomy of a kind, discipline, responsibility, and a kind of energy in each school. I think that's healthy, and the model for a decentralized, the opposite model for a decentralized university would certainly not, in this case, be a centralized university. We would have to have a bureaucracy so large that it wouldn't make any sense and would all come to a grinding halt. So I think the real question is, if you want to, as it were, induce a bit of collaboration in this kind of institution structure the way it is, with very few resources in the center, how can you do it? It's not easy, but I think probably we need to simply look to see whether there are some structural and collaborative mechanisms. One reason why I'm interested in the office of a provost is because I think that's one of the things that could help in the center of the institution to have another academic officer who could spend his or her time thinking about academic planning across the schools, other kinds of planning across the schools that could facilitate where it's needed, where it's helpful, where it's positive, and where there's some payoff, certain kinds of collaboration that are now very, very difficult to inculcate. There's, no one simply has the time. So it happens, if it happens at all, happenstantially, and so I, I think it would be nice if we could do it a little less happenstantially. What does that mean at the concrete level? Well, at this very moment, there are several different schools working on environmental studies. There are several different schools working on healthcare. There are several different schools working on the problems of public education. There are several different schools working on different aspects of international studies, including the democratic, emerging democratic institutions and their economic problems in Central and Eastern Europe and the Soviet Union. At the same time, there's very, very little capacity for anybody at any given moment to know what in either, any of those fields is actually going on, who's making what appointments, what courses are being given, whether there's any effort to sort of see whether there's overlap, whether there's any way to get the groups together and produce, if you will, more of a Harvard curriculum or a plan or a program, even if it isn't highly structured, but at least the conception of what it is the university as a whole is about in any one of those fields. That's one thing that I think not just we would be able to do structurally better, but one would hope intellectually better as an institution, as part of the effort in a time particularly of scarce resources, of really trying to bring more things together and without necessarily upending or turning on its head the total system and structure that we now have. That's one thing that it would be nice to be able to do over the next few years, shift the texture of the place a little bit, see what the most important interschool, interdepartmental and large themes are that we might all think about and select a few of and see whether we could make a difference about as a whole university, and then see if we can find some money to help the programs. That's one thing that I think a lot about, and I think we ought to be able to do something about in the next 10 years. Another thing is, I'm really, as you probably know, it doesn't apply necessarily directly here, but I think in another way it should if we're going to think like a whole university. I am very interested in undergraduate education, and that means in some sense I'm interested in teaching, and that means in some sense I'm interested in teaching at any level all across the university, including the Kennedy School and other schools. So that whole intersection of things with undergraduate education being one important central piece there, but other issues and problems that can spill out of a concern for undergraduate education, including the questions of pedagogy throughout the institution, is another problem I'm concerned about. A piece of that obviously is financial aid. Going back to the financial problems of the institution as a whole, one of them is that it's very difficult to get the amount of financial aid we need to have, to be able to keep drawing the kinds of students we want to draw. And that's partly because there isn't as much money around in the society as a whole. In your particular case, it's because the commitment to graduate student financial aid, which was very strong in the 1950s and 60s, almost disappeared nationally around 1970, so that ever since then, except for occasional donors and what the university itself can do, and loans, there has been comparatively little outside of the sciences and some of the social sciences where people are carried on contracts. But if finding people, making people aware of the fact that student aid is important at the graduate level as well as the undergraduate level, finding people who are willing to invest in it when there are so many other priorities, whether it be the problems of cities, or the problem of primary and secondary school education, or the problems of the homeless, or whatever, or the environment, or whatever, persuading someone to give or endow a fellowship at the graduate level in XDX or YDY is not so, not so easy these days, and something we have to work hard on. But focusing on undergraduate education therefore and things that spill out of it in various ways is another important thing. That's very much on my mind. There's a whole number of different issues I could bring up in terms of the university as a whole, things that pertain more to other schools, different programs, where I think we have real priorities across the natural and physical sciences, across the applied sciences. We need to think more about university computing, networking, and indeed the whole transformation that information technology is bringing to the way we do our scholarships, the way we do our teaching, the way we think really as students or faculty. All of these things, one way or another, are going to have to be addressed in the next 10 years. They're not trivial, and I'm only racing over them only because one could go on forever and there's no need to go on forever. Every one of those, though, that I just mentioned, as well as some others, including the library system and what's going to happen to that, also are university-wide issues. And that's another reason why, in some sense, we need to find a way to hook the place together, quite literally with computing, but in other ways as well, because we can't deal with these on a purely a school-by-school basis anymore. But what about this school? I have spoken to several groups, and I may well have spoken to many of you before about it. It does seem to me to be not only an important school in itself, but it seems to me to be an extremely important school at this moment in history. It also seems to me to be a unique school among schools of public policy. That is, whether you think about its particular kind of breadth, whether you think of its special kind of commitment to public service, and the range of subjects and disciplines and areas in which it is involved, whether you think about its capacity, whether fully realized yet or not, nonetheless, its capacity to hook to a full range of professional schools as well as arts and sciences, to the business school, to the law school, to the education school, et cetera, et cetera, the economics department, the government department, all kinds of things. You really are in a rather unique situation here that I think really can't be matched anywhere else. That puts you in a special place, at a special moment in history where issues of public policy, of government, and public service have never been more important, where, as you know, the professions, most of ones at least that one might think about going into, are not likely to be highly renewative. At the same time, they will give you all sorts of psychic compensation, and maybe even some real compensation. But if we didn't care about this as a university in the same way that we care about teaching and an awful lot of other things that don't pay a lot of money, that do nonetheless make all the difference in trying to make the society, and indeed many other societies, better to the extent we can make them better, then this is a critical school, and it's critical to the university. I do like to think of it as connected as much to arts and sciences as to the other professional schools, and I like to think of it as having the capacity to draw on all those resources as well as to contribute. That's part of, again, why connecting the parts is so important. Well, let me just stop there. I know you'll have questions about that as well. I'll give you simply an update on the search. I think, as you know, I've written to a lot of you. I've been meeting with the advisory committee on the search through, I guess, since April or May, late June, very, very steadily through July, August, September, and so on. All I can say there is that we are making good progress. We've got a lot of advice from many people inside this room and many people outside this room, and I, if I had any report to make at all, that wasn't a detailed report, it would be to say that the sense of the school remains that of an exciting place, of a place with enormous potential, a place that is, in spite of financial issues and problems, nonetheless extremely healthy, and that is forging ahead under the acting dean, and that we therefore should and will do a very good, careful, thoughtful, deliberate process in selecting the dean, and as I say, we're on our way. So I think I will stop there, and I haven't talked about a lot of things, and if I haven't touched on them, please feel free to ask me about them, or in fact, any of the things I have talked about.
Hello. My name is Randy Faraes. I'm a first-year MPA student, and I'd like to pick up on one of the issues that you laid out on the table earlier. You mentioned the fact that we're in the middle of an educational crisis, and you also touched on the fact that it stems from the financial problems universities are undergoing. But I see this educational crisis much more in terms of the deficient quality of education and the way education is being compromised due to the lack of faculty diversity, not only here at Harvard, but also nationwide. And this educational crisis is merely a reflection of the ineptnesses of the tenure system, but also of the inability of the faculties to resolve this problem on their own. So my question to you is, what new initiatives is administration going to do to take the lead on this issue? And in addition, what role do students have in this process?
First of all, just to qualify, I may have mentioned finances, I think, but I mentioned quite a few other things that were of concern to me in the general educational situation, I think, including the differences between the way we might see diversity and the country as a whole. I don't see the crisis, so to speak, and I'm not sure I would quite call it a crisis, but all the problems as purely financial. I just see that financial issues are exerting a general pressure on the society as a whole, and that's adding to the exacerbation that's already there in the system as well. On the issue of diversity, I guess I see three things. First of all, there's a, there's a short-term issue, there's a long-term issue, and then there's a question of how the institution responds to both. The short-term issue is an underrepresentation on faculties with respect to minorities and women. I think depending on the field, it varies somewhat, but broadly speaking, both of those. And in the short term, in some fields, the problems are getting resolved because the pools of applicants coming through, and particularly younger people, are larger in some of those groups than they were before. But I think there's probably still a way to go, and quite honestly, again, depending on what field you're talking about, what school you're talking about, and so on.
We can just limit it to the Kennedy School, that's fine.
Yeah. The problem is I can't quote you all the disciplines, et cetera, but for at least many of them, you will find that the, you know, the number of people out there gaining PhDs and coming through the pipeline in these groups is still quite small, depending on the group. There are probably more women than any other group. There are increasing number of Asian Americans, but there are still very few blacks, and there are very few Latin Americans, Latinos, and Hispanics. So that, to some extent, the only short-term strategy for several of these groups is to rate other institutions, quite honestly. One has to really be aggressive and to go out and to try to take from other places people who are already on the faculties there, because there are not sufficient numbers coming through at the moment to get to the kind of diversity you or I might have in mind. Longer term, there's another kind of a problem, which is how do you affect the pipeline? That is, we can count the number of people who are getting, by group, by group, getting PhDs in all these fields, and I recognize that in the school, a PhD isn't a prerequisite in all the fields as it is in many other places, but still, in many of the hardest disciplines to fill, the PhD is a prerequisite. We can count the number of those, and the numbers are not moving very much. That is, in the country as a whole, last year, about 2% of the, of the people in fields that we would be interested in who got PhDs were black. The number of Hispanics, not much different than that. The number of Asians, rising. But until we can get further down and affect the way that seniors in high school, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, et cetera, begin to think whether they want to go into some sort of an academic career, we will be faced throughout the university, maybe less in certain areas here, with a shortage. What can we do? I think, first of all, in the ad hoc process, you can, you can sensitize, and I think there's a considerable amount of sensitivity already in the process, schools, deans, faculties, to the need for such candidates. My own sense, though, is that while you can recruit, search hard, and do your best to identify exceptional candidates in the groups that are underrepresented, when it comes to making a decision, you do have to choose the best candidate. And best, obviously, is a variable term. In some case, best could mean someone who can contribute a certain thing from a certain perspective that can't be contributed in another way. But at a certain point also, best has to mean the criteria we judge every faculty member by, quality of scholarship, quality of teaching, quality of citizenship, et cetera. You can keep pushing, will keep pushing, but I, I don't think you can promise a great turnaround in a magical way until the numbers in the pipeline begin to change.
And about student participation? Can you address the issue of student participation in this entire process, because the main consumers of this education is knowledge is students, and we're in, have been, will continue to be, continue locked out, so.
Well, if you mean in the actual process of electing faculty, I think really there, you don't have a formal role. If you mean in terms of being consulted broadly, which some schools do, about the fact that there are certain kinds of openings available, what kind of person would you like to see in it, if you have suggestions, et cetera, I think there is a role for consultation depending on the school there, and I think students have been very helpful. Why I don't think there's a formal role in the process is because, in some sense, this doesn't have to do with the fact that you're younger or just students and so on, it's basically, it has to do with accountability. That is, the people making the decision are, in some sense, the people who ought to be willing to and need to have to live with the decision. They're the people who will be the faculty person's colleagues. They're the people who will have to watch and see how that person performs, and that person will keep performing for 20, 30, 40 years after you have left, if it's a tenured person, and they'll be teaching for that long and doing scholarship for that long. The decision for the institution is a long time, very, very, very important bet on a person, and only the institution's going to have to live out that bet. That's why I think it really has to be the people who can be accountable for the bet who make it.
And who is the faculty accountable to?
Faculty is accountable.
If they're not accountable to the students, who are they accountable to?
They're accountable to the dean and to the president, really. Sorry, we have a lot, oh, okay, sorry, I didn't realize there were two microphones.
My question is about social relations within the institution. At the dedication or rededication of Lehman Hall on Friday, one of the first speakers talked about how graduate students had been treated as second-class citizens, and wasn't this nice that now that they were going to have a place of their own? And as that was happening, I looked over and looked through the window of the building to see one of the cafeteria workers watching the proceedings from the window, and I was struck by what I think has been a problem over the years, which is that, in fact, people in that position have often been, to my mind, second-class citizens, even more so than people discriminated against horizontally, so to speak. And I wonder how you, if you see this as a problem, and how, what you see as ways that this situation might be addressed, not so much individually, because I think different people handle it differently individually, but institutionally, so that people who actually make ongoing contributions through their work can be included more in the ongoing activities of the university?
I think it is a problem, and I think it's, it's one that we are, actually, in fact, I spent two hours on it at lunch today with six or eight people, faculty members, administrators, a couple of deans who were particularly concerned about the issue in their school, and so on, and who asked for the meeting, and so on. So, yeah, I think it's a problem. How, I mean, what should actually be the rhythm of work obligations and how you can cut across those is another matter. It may well be that person was preparing the lunch, and there was no way to get that person out of the building, et cetera, et cetera. But that's a, that's a smaller issue. I think we do have to be more inclusive, and we have to think inside of each locale, if you will, about how to, when it's appropriate and when it's possible, include people, whether in gatherings like this, whether in various kinds of social gatherings, or equally important, every day, day in and day out, when you meet people in the hallway, whether you say hello to them or not, when they do a good job after a seminar, how many people, whether they're students or faculty, go up to the people who clean the building or put up the chairs and said, thank you very much, it was really a great show, et cetera, et cetera. More formally, I think there are other things we can do and simply have to do, which is to make sure that the actual work that the people are doing seems satisfying, that they have a sense that they have formal recognition for it, that they feel they're being candidly dealt with and candidly evaluated and well compensated, and as much as anything, that they have actual sense of career paths open to them. One of the things we're thinking quite hard about now is something that may sound elementary, but really isn't, it's a transfer program in order to allow people in different parts of the institution to be more aware of what opportunities for employment there may be in other parts of the institution, not because we want everybody to jump up and leave their current job, but because over a long period of service, we need to think harder about how these people can grow, develop, and get more satisfaction themselves. So I think, in fact, there is a lot of work to be done there. Some of it's formal, but a lot of it is actually day in and day out in the hands of all of us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Kelzansit. I'm in MPP 1. Because this is a school of government and is presumably preparing us for relatively low-paying careers in the public service.
Sorry about that, yes.
My question is, well, it seems especially important that financial aid be made available to us in the form of grants and scholarships as opposed to loans. You mentioned that this is becoming increasingly difficult because, because of a lack or a decline in graduate aid in recent years.
Twenty years, yeah.
In the last 20 years. Well, my question is this, there are so many other schools of public policy that are doing a much better job than this one of providing grants and scholarships to their students. Why exactly is that? Presumably, they're all affected by this trend of declining graduate aid. So why is this school lagging so far behind in being able to sort of pick up that slack?
Well, I can't speak for all of them, but I can, I know about at least one very well. And part of the issue is that the schools are differentially funded and founded, and also, to some extent, their faculty-student ratios are quite different, and one could solve part of the problem by changing that, but you would have another kind of a problem if you did change it. But for instance, again, it depends what other school you're thinking about, because there isn't any other one quite like this, but the Wilson School at Princeton, which I know quite well, happened to have been started by an enormous, massive gift of general funds of, I can't remember what, but I think something of the order of $26 million back in the 1960s, which has now become well over $100 million. And from the very beginning, they simply styled the school in such a way that it would take only a certain number of students, and they made sure as part of the initial endowment package that there was going to be very heavy funding. This school is, you know, depending on where you count, but at least in its modern history, not a whole lot more than a decade or a decade and a half old. It was not started that way. It did not have a general funds endowment. Much of the Much of the money that has come in to help support the school has come in to fund specific centers or parts of the buildings. There's comparatively little core support or flexible endowment, and that means that the kind of funds at the Wilson School, and presumably some others have available to it, just aren't here or aren't here yet.
But it seems that, you said that a lot of the funds come in to support other buildings and things, but it seems that those funds are actively recruited. You go and ask for money so that you can build the Taubman Center or something.
Yes.
So, isn't that a little bit circular? I mean, couldn't you go out and ask for money for this?
We do almost every day. One of the sad facts is that comparatively few, indeed almost, you know, I wouldn't say no, but comparatively few donors are interested in graduate student aid. It sounds paradoxical, and indeed, I think it's very short-sighted, but I can promise you that virtually every donor who is looked at in a professional school context, and especially in the schools like the School of Education, Divinity, Design, Kennedy School, where there are severe aid problems, student aid problems, that is one of the first questions that's asked. It's very, I wouldn't say easy, but if you're putting things in front of a donor, or if a donor has interests, it's comparatively easy to get them excited about a program. It's sometimes relatively easy, assuming you have someone who's interested at all, to get them interested in a building. When it comes to what we call core support, money for fellowships, money to keep the central activities going, even sometimes money to endow professorships, though more people are willing to do that, and especially lately, thank heavens, than other things, those things are just very hard to find. That's less true in arts and sciences because a great many people who go through the college for four years identify with the college or, you know, the university as a whole, and they leave bequests. They leave unrestricted monies. That's what goes to help scholarship aid, it's what goes to help the library system, and so on. In the professional schools, people are much more program-oriented, and it's harder to raise that kind of money. It's just an unhappy fact of life, but it's not for want of trying.
Thank you.
My name is Sylvia Trigio, and I'm in MPP-1 as well. In general, deans at major universities hold their positions for eight to 10 years. Since the new dean of the K-School will lead this school into the year 2000, are you considering candidates who have demonstrated a strong commitment to diversity? Have you made that a priority item for yourself in your considerations?
Yes, yeah. We have had a diverse pool, we have a diverse pool, and we're interested in people who are interested in diversity, no question.
Hi, my name is Robert Timveksh, and I'm a mid-career student here. One of the most vexing problems for a student of one school, say the Kennedy School, who's interested in taking courses at another school, say the business school, the law school, is that they never seem to be on the same schedule. The Kennedy School has made it to the Gregorian calendar, but the law school and the business school still seem to be on the Julian calendar, and most of the, most of the students are operating on the six-month college scholarship service calendar. Do you suppose during your tenure as president of the university, we might be able to see all the colleges start on a common date, end on a common date, and have their final exams during a common period?
You know, you see why I want to provost. Next to parking, the most difficult thing, the most difficult thing to change or to suggest changing on a campus is the schedule. I don't know, maybe we can make some progress. I don't really know enough about what dictates the rhythms. I know what dictates the rhythm in arts and sciences, I don't know enough about what dictates, quite honestly, the rhythms in the other schools. It may be happenstance, in which case, maybe one can change it. There may be more intrinsic things involved. In the college, I know, it's simply been the case that for a long, long time, they've felt that even though it's a bit hard on students to have them not finish the term before Christmas, the students actually do better, they write better papers over the vacation, they have more time for a reading period, they get, they do better on their exams, et cetera, et cetera. They may be wrong, they may be right, but there's actually an academic reason for it. As I say, you may agree or disagree with the judgment, but it's not, that one's not happenstance. For all I know, other ones are educationally determined, or they may not be. We can find out.
Hi, my name is David Plotz, and I'm a senior at the college, and if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you a question about undergraduate education, even though
Fine.
I'm here among graduates. There's a growing sense, I think, among undergraduates that the core is just not working, that courses are too big, that there are too few of them, that they're just essentially teaching what's taught in department courses but in a weaker way. Would you consider going to some sort of distribution requirement system?
Yeah, well, I think we got a, we have a dean there who's looking at it, and I have to work with him. I'll tell you what I have found in my canvassing, which is so far impressionistic. Partly, I guess, in the very biggest two or three courses, there may be something of that, act 10 and so on. Not so many of the core courses are up around there, and I, so I haven't heard that complaint so much. What I have heard is the lack of flexibility for some students who feel that, particularly people who've done AP courses, who feel that they're really quite far ahead in certain fields or certain areas, and where they have to take a course at the core level, which is basically, if not a repeat, not what they would like to do. And what I've said, and what I think the dean is sensitive to, is to see whether there is a way that getting some flexibility in there could work, be viable, without unraveling the whole thing. If you want to unravel the whole thing, that's obviously a much, much bigger step to take. So much has been put in place to bring that about, that a few years of hard study, a lot of resources, and a lot of hard work, that before you decided to dismantle it, you want to be pretty sure on the basis of quite a bit of frontal research and survey and everything else and evaluation, that you were doing the right thing. None of these systems, let me say, works terribly, terribly well. That is, having lived with the distribution system at Princeton for quite a while, I think it does have the advantage of making it easier for the students to achieve flexibility. The complaint there is that, basically, the courses that many students get are just a departmental introductory course for that particular discipline. So for the student looking for a course in a field that is not likely to be his or her own major area of interest, maybe quite far outside, and they are looking for something more general, more stimulating, and more conceptual, the way the core courses are, they don't find them. So that's the obverse of what we have. You gain the flexibility, but you end up with mostly a lot of courses that are departmental introductions. Every, every single one of these has a bug in it somewhere. But I think we can look at this one and see whether there's a way to achieve some flexibility. And I don't honestly know yet whether there is.
Thank you.
My name is Gail Leifwitch, and I'm on the staff of the Joan Schornstein Barone Center here at the Kennedy School.
Yes.
And I'm going to ask you sort of a vision thing kind of question, as George Bush would perceive it.
All right.
It seems to me that at an institution like the Kennedy School, one can make the argument for Harvard, but we already have a wonderful president now, but an organization that serves so many constituencies, often with competing claims, complementary as well, but frequently competing in some sort of grand way, that resolving sort of the issues among those sort of challenging, confronting the challenges of managing those kinds of multiple constituencies, is really a matter of who your leader is, that at some level, many of the issues we've even heard tonight, and so many that it seems to me are going to face this school as it goes into the year 2000, are issues of leadership. And I guess I'm curious, as you've been canvassing the many people you have been canvassing, to pronounce the word right, canvassing, and thinking about
Yes.
And thinking about the new dean, sort of the outlines of your sense of the vision that you hope that that new dean will have. Granted, you want to leave, I understand it wouldn't be fully defined, because that is in part for he, for him or her to provide.
Yeah.
But I would think that you were beginning to have a sense of what the sort of verest of outlines are of that, and that, to me, is going to give me a sense of where we think this school is going to be going.
Well, I'll give you my preliminary thoughts. First, it seems to me that when you look for a dean, you're obviously looking for a lot of things, but you're looking, first of all, in my book, for a person of character and a person with genuine human qualities and ideals. I mean, it seems to me that without that, very little is really possible in an educational setting, and certainly in a school that's committed to public service. Obviously, you want someone who is intellectually capable, you want someone who can administer the place and fundraise, and so on, and I don't mean by any means to subordinate those things. But without a person who's human qualities and capacity to really understand what service is, and what it is to want to do something for the public good, what it is to want to create a community, as it were, intellectual and otherwise, inside of a school, I think you're really starting behind the eight ball if you don't have that to begin with. At a more formal level, I guess, I would say that one of the clear things the school does have to address is the issue of how, basically, to make some of the choices you just outlined, because with a span as wide as this school's span, we're virtually almost any problem, and any issue, from the environment to poverty to democratic institutions in Eastern Europe, to whatever, can be an interest of the public interest. There is simply no way one can do it all, and one's going to have to carve out an agenda that will make sense, and that's really, that will have enough, as it were, critical mass intellectually and humanly inside the institution, so that the contributions can be real contributions, and the students going out can be trained in something, educated in something. Now, precisely what those choices should be is harder to delineate. I've talked with, you know, several people, including Bob Putnam, about some of the emerging themes. I think that some of those are important. It does seem to me, for instance, that the whole question of what we mean by democratic institutions, and how they are going to manage themselves, if you will, in the best sense of the word, and survive healthily in the current and future prospective world that we're seeing, is a critical problem that we need to face. How we're going to find out the way in which the intersection between democratic institutions and a healthy economy can be worked is obviously one of the critical problems facing a number of countries who may not therefore be able to sustain their democratic institutions if they can't get their economy going well, fast enough, et cetera. Well, I'm not a political scientist, or a development economist, or a Kennedy School graduate, so I can't give you every intellectual area, but that seems to be, if you wanted a big problem that had to do with the public interest and government service, it is what should be, how do you make democracies function effectively over the next period when resources are likely to be scarce, when there's a great deal more of internal strife and division in many of these societies, I think, including ours? Whether the divisions are economic, whether they're religious, whether in some cases nationalistic in origin, whether they're racial and ethnic, whatever, where the societies are torn more than they used to be, how are you going to put Humpty Dumpty back together again and have a rather happy and functioning place that's economically viable as well? So that's, if you're looking for one thing, that's critical. If you go on from there, I can tick off two or three or four that would be of interest to me, whether it's the consensus here, I don't know, but clearly, problems of poverty and urban, it seems to me, the problems of cities, poverty, and so on, are a question of a certain set of systems that need to be looked at in a rather special way. How do we govern our cities? Not so easy at the moment, and not getting any better, at least as I read the newspapers from day to day. I do think the environment will become more important, whether we should go into that and go into it in a big way or a little way. In this school, I don't know, because the technological base is so important that you do want to think hard about that. Public schools, though, is another area where I think you could make a difference, and where the problems are not going to go away in a hurry, where you've been thinking about doing something, how much you should build, I don't know, but that's another system's problem, that is in pretty powerful trouble, and where if you could make a difference, it would make a huge difference to the country as a whole. Those are a few of the areas. Whether you would choose those or not, I don't know, but I think it wouldn't be difficult to stake out a menu, if you will, and then to have, one of the tasks, I guess, to see, that I see for the dean is to have the capacity, one, to, thinking with students and faculty and other members throughout the institution, about which of these really seem to be the most promising in terms of the payoff, not only intellectually, but in terms of human need, for the next 10 to 20 years, where should we make the investment? Two, where's the comparative advantage? Where do we already have some strength? What can we build on? We can't create everything from new just because the problems change. And not just the comparative advantage inside the school, but in other schools. Where can we help get resources, faculty, students, et cetera? Where are there other courses? Where are there good research materials, et cetera, et cetera? And it would be through that kind of process, which I think has to be, to some extent, collegial, but in the end, somebody has to make the choices, and they have to splice well enough with the resource base as well. So I think that would be number two. Third, you clearly have to have a sense within the school sustained, and you need someone who can sustain it, that it is, in some sense, one show. You don't have departments. You have many, many programs, you have many centers, and you have people of many different ages. So it's a rather special kind of problem. Some schools have a hard time getting together because they have such hard departmental lines that it's difficult to cross them. You don't have that. You have a different kind of set of issues that is going to call for another kind of collegiality and a certain kind of imagination and leadership with a certain kind of temperament to bring it off. I would see that as very important.
You would get some agreement here.
Well, I first like to thank you for coming on behalf of the Kennedy School students and listening to our concerns, and I think that our big concern here at the Kennedy School is the diversity of the faculty. Every student caucus has its own diversity committee. There is a People of Color Coalition that formed last year. Last week, we convened approximately a third of the MPP students to discuss this issue. So I would say that this is probably the biggest concern that we have in our education here. Now, some data that is, that has been provided by the Kennedy School shows that from the years '86 to '90, no minority student has been admitted into either the public policy, economics and government, or PhD fellows program here at Harvard from '86 to '90. And so my first question to you is, what message do you think that sends out to students who are thinking about PhD programs? And the second question is, I understand that there is no PhD program housed within the Kennedy School, that the students that we tap into come from GSAS. So my question is, how are, how are you going to get whoever our new dean is to work on the PhD problem, which is now being housed at the GSAS?
Well, you're talking about a big problem. First of all, the first question, clearly, if there's no representation within the student ranks, then people looking at the school from the outside, that says something. Now, the message may or may not be read rightly. I mean, it could say that to some people that nobody's trying or nobody cares, that could be right. Somehow, at least talking to faculty members and students, and your acting dean, I don't get that impression, but that could be one way to read it. It could be that people have tried and not succeeded. It could be, as I said before, that the pools in the particular department you're looking at for PhD students are still so tiny.
But I think students would compare the numbers here at Harvard with numbers at other universities, other comparable universities, and would then say that Harvard wasn't putting its efforts into recruiting.
Well, then, I guess I'd like to see the numbers. I haven't seen them, but I would like to see the numbers. In other words, I do, I think we should then just get down to facts, look at the numbers, look at the pools, and do what we always do. Plot what, if there's a certain number of people out there coming through, not just what our fair share should be, but what more than our fair share might be, and then find a strategy for trying to get them. Then you can test, you know, then you know you've tried, then you can see what the results are. But if some people are actually getting and doing better than we are, then we ought to be able
Well, I think it would be tough to do worse than zero.
Yeah. If that's the case, then we should find out why, and that's not a hard thing to do.
The second question about the dean, how will he be involved in the PhD program?
Well, I think, first of all, there is an issue across the university that, at the moment at least, one has to face, which is that only, the only PhD, at least as far as I know, that can be granted is through FAS. That's a longstanding historical situation, and I don't know enough about its origins or its, the reasons for its practice, but that's, it's not just the case of the Kennedy School, it's the case of every single other professional school. FAS is the only place where a PhD is granted. So every professional school, at least to my knowledge, has to have its PhDs granted through FAS. Now, not every school, that doesn't mean every PhD has to come through an FAS department, and if that's, if that's, in fact, what you're saying, and I don't know if that's the case, but I can find out, then it seems to me but I can find out, then it seems to me what needs to be done there is for the dean to sit down with the department chair and the FAS dean, and I'm perfectly willing to join the conversation, and try to find out what the situation is. Is it because there's not enough recruiting being done at the departmental level? Is there some way the school can get involved in the recruiting process with the department? Is it already involved and just not being affected? I don't know. There's a series of questions that one can ask, and a series, and you can find out relatively quickly, but this is the first time I've heard that particular number.
My name is Andrew Romanoff. I'm an MPP-1, like the previous speaker. I think you'll find something of a glut here in that regard.
It's all right, no problem.
But I attended my undergraduate years at a different institution whose president seemed somewhat reluctant to commit his office to broad social goals other than presumably the pursuit of truth or something like that.
Yes.
For fear, I think of compromising the university's integrity somehow as a marketplace of ideas, and I wonder whether you share that fear or whether you intend instead to stake a position of leadership on issues of national concern like those that were raised earlier.
Well, I think that it depends which kind of an issue you're talking about. If it's an issue having to do with diversity, I speak my mind all the time on that issue. I have no problem. It doesn't seem to me that that's an issue you want to avoid, and I don't quite myself see how that compromises the integrity of the institution. There are other issues where, you know, let's say the issue of divestment of stocks. I think the problem is more difficult because what you're doing fundamentally is therefore getting the university involved in direct action, taking a particular position with respect to a particular company, usually because of a particular political or other situation. And then you have to see what that situation is, and you have to decide whether the university as an institution wants to take a point of view on a particular political situation. That, I confess, I have got more trouble with, but that's a different kind of matter.
Can I just take that example since you raised it, and then I'll cede the ground here? Do you think that in its inaction, the university can really avoid taking a position in that way?
Well, there are different kinds of positions to take. One, if you start with the presumption that the university has resources and must in some way invest them, unless we just literally let them sit there and watch the endowment go to zero within a few years, and then we will be in great shape. If you assume we have to do something with our resources in order to try to keep at least the current purchasing power of our endowment whole, so that other people will have at least as many resources as we do, then the first level question is, you know, if that's the problem, how do you do that in a way that is consistent with other parts of the institution's mission? And the difficulty with beginning to use those investments as means of making political or other decisions on behalf of the institution is that it does very quickly, if you're not careful, and even if you are careful, can begin to interact with the larger part of the mission. I think recently, for instance, you know, there's been a divestment on the issue of tobacco stocks. That's not one I was here for, and I didn't hear the arguments one way or the other, and I guess I would imagine that there may not have been a great deal of controversy over that one. If the evidence was sound, and it's a public health issue, I can imagine getting a kind of decision that would make good sense and could be defensible on those grounds. At the same time, supposing it weren't quite, supposing the evidence weren't quite good enough, supposing there were still reputable scientists in the institution and people who smoked, who thought that tobacco didn't harm you, and people who smoked who thought that tobacco didn't harm you, and yet somehow you had come to the conclusion for one reason or another that you thought still the preponderance of evidence was one way rather than the other way. Well, at the moment, you take that position, first of all, there is a sense in which you are literally cutting off debate for those people who are concerned with that issue, supposing there's an assistant professor who happens to be studying the problems of addiction and who thinks that tobacco isn't harmful, and supposing that person's coming up for promotion next year, and supposing as a university you take the position that it is harmful and you sell the stocks. How do you think that assistant professor's going to feel after he or she doesn't get tenure? That it was a totally unclouded decision? You can say all you want forever and ever, but you've thrown down something there, whether you know it or not, think about it or not, that infects the atmosphere. Now, it may infect the atmosphere for the people on the other side, too, but that's one of the reasons why universities, I think, are reluctant in those areas to declare themselves, because on the campus, you can be sure there's almost always some set of faculty members or students who feel rather different about it, and you're going to be inhibited. So you better make sure the ones you do are really right.
My name is Liam Rector. I'm a mid-career student. I'm interested in how you see your role as a university president in protecting First Amendment rights, specifically where they affect so-called hate speech strictures at universities, and more broadly in the culture, freedom of expression in issues such as the National Endowment for the Arts.
Yep. Well, I think that's somewhat different from our situation, but let me talk to the university situation first. I confess to be quite far on the spectrum along the way of defending the First Amendment right, i.e., it seems to me that when people are personally offensive, so-called fighting words definition of the Supreme Court, where you are actually abusing someone in person, denigrating someone in person, or provoking someone in person, then you've crossed the line, and I'm talking only about speech, obviously, if it's physical contact, that's where you've already crossed the line, whatever you're doing, but just speech, you've crossed the line that you shouldn't cross. If you're talking about symbolic acts, if you're talking about articles in newspapers, journals, if you're talking about any number of things like that, then if you start censoring, I think you're really giving up a rather fundamental principle in the institution. The only way out of that box, I think, is to try to create a climate on the campus that in the first place is such that people who are thinking about being gratuitously offensive in general, but not to a particular person, will think very long and hard about doing it because they feel that they're part of a community where they ought to be trying to understand other people, learn from other people, live with the diversity that's there, and where if they do too much of that sort of stuff, they will find the community fragmenting. And that's, of course, what has happened at some places, and it's a very tough trade-off. I can imagine getting in extremis to a point where there was such an emergency situation on campus that you put everything on hold. I would hope we would never get there, but I think the only counterweight to, as it were, allowing the kind of freedom that's intrinsic to an institution is simultaneously trying to create the set of attitudes that makes people genuinely want to find out rather than to shout, if you will.
Do you see yourself defending the First Amendment outside of Harvard in your role as a college president in things like the National Endowment for the Arts, speaking up against Jesse Helms and the like? Sort of goes to what he was saying before.
I think myself, that's really a question of, A, to some extent, the individual and president in his or her own knowledge about the issue and how well they think they can speak with some authority, because a lot of people say things that are simply discounted. And second of all, there is a role here. I'm speaking again, when I speak, no matter how much I try to dissociate myself, for a lot of people inside who may or may not share my view and who may feel very differently about it, and then that gets you back to the other question of when you're straying off the university's intrinsic terrain and its mission and defending its right and so on. To what extent do you take actions or say things that are likely to affect adversely in terms of their sense of how well they feel they can speak up people inside your own institution? I know my own mind on the Jesse Helm thing. I'd be more than happy to talk to people about it, whether I want to go public about it and put Harvard University in the middle of a squabble between the NEA and Jesse Helms and so on and so forth is not a step I would want to take lightly because there's too much riding on it, too many other people involved, not just myself.
Sure. Yeah. Why don't we try and make them brief, and we can take the remaining four questions, if you can do them briefly.
My name's Maria Shemansky. I am a second-year MPA student, and my question goes back to the selection of a dean, and that is, how are you going to reconcile the tension between the two camps? One who thinks that the dean should have more of an academic focus and the other, the dean should have more of a practitioner focus.
Well, that assumes there's an irreconcilable tension.
Well, I don't think it's necessary.
No, I don't, I take the question seriously, but one of the things quite interesting that I've discovered through the search process, and I guess I've talked to several groups, lots of individuals, 20, 30, 40, I don't know quite how many, plus met with the committee eight, 10 times or whatever, had lots of letters, is that while that is often cited as an issue, after people have talked about it for quite a while and thought about it for quite a while, and then looked at real-life candidates for quite a while, it's clear that you're looking for somebody who's concerned about precisely that, that you're not looking for somebody who's going to split the place apart, that the tension is, if managed properly, a perfectly healthy tension that you cannot get out of the school and don't want to get out of the school. So you're looking for someone who is, you're looking for someone who's sensitive to it, who can help people use it productively, if you will, and who won't really see it as a dichotomy.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, first, second, 1990, the Faculty Council decided that unless ROTC changed its policy of discrimination against gays and lesbians by the spring, that Harvard would sever all ties with the program. And what I'd like to know is what your role in that decision is, and according to today's Crimson, you appear unsure that the Faculty Council made the right decision. And what I'd like to know is, do you believe in equal access for all students to all Harvard activities regardless of sexual orientation?
Well, my sense, and I'd want to go check it because I haven't, you know, I don't know what chapter and verse since I wasn't here then, my memory of that resolution was that it was a recommendation and that the word was that the university should consider severing ties. I've got to check the exact wording, and that it was not a decision, and that it did have a clause in there asking about what progress, if any, had been made. So I think my own sense was that what was being called for was a review of that, since it was a recommendation, and what I said to the Crimson, part of which, what was reported was reported accurately, some of which didn't get in the story, was that I thought there ought to be some kind of a formal review, taking up the recommendation, looking hard at it again, weighing the arguments pro and con, giving us a study, and then letting us decide. So I guess if I have a difference, it has to do with whether we call that a decision, which I don't think it was. My sense is that the process ought to involve definitely the Faculty Council, if it wishes to be centrally involved, clearly FAS, but probably also to the extent to which ROTC is a university-wide issue in some sense, i.e., it's Harvard making a decision, not just one group or another. It ought to have a process that solicits views and has the input of different people and comes to conclusions based on some broad study as well as solicitation. I think finally, the recommendation goes to the dean, and it probably comes to me. And then I look and see what the study says, and I try to make a decision, or at least I make a recommendation to the boards of governors to the extent to which they and the corporation wish to be involved, or I deal with it myself. I'm not quite sure how else one can really deal with that.
Well, I guess my, the question more simply is, it seems to me that this isn't, shouldn't be an area of contention. I mean, that you wouldn't have such a debate over allowing a group on campus actively supported with Harvard funds that didn't let, say, African-American students in. I mean, it's a very simple, basic human rights question, and I'm offended that you think it's okay to debate whether or not I have a right to be involved in something solely on the basis of sexual orientation. I mean, it's not, to me, a question of bureaucracy or which is a better decision, but rather a question of whether or not Harvard's going to stand up for simple justice or not.
Well, I think, in terms of Harvard's policy, I have absolutely not only no quarrel with you, but I support it fully, as I did in the introduction of a similar policy at Princeton. At the same time, I have to admit that we had ROTC at Princeton, even though we had that policy, because there was some hope that the ROTC and the Army might change its mind with respect to gays and lesbians, even as it changed its mind with respect to women after a certain amount of time and so on. So to some extent, you're asking partly a question of, if you will, justice, but partly a question of how much and in what ways do you try to effect change in human organizations that are complicated? And do you basically decide that you're going to change your own policy and set it, and that anyone who doesn't conform to it, according to your terms, more or less within a short time span or immediately, you will not have anything to do with? Or are you going to say that you will give it a reasonable amount of time and try and work at it, and then make a decision? That's a judgment issue.
Well, I guess I would just say that I think two years is fine, and President Bach wrote a letter to Secretary Cheney, it hasn't done anything.
Yeah.
My name's Elaine Marne, I'm an MPP-1, and I'm afraid I'm here once again to pick up on the question of diversity.
Yes.
You mentioned earlier that students were not given any formal say in the appointing of staff because they are not affected in the long term, in terms of university sense, by these appointments, and that somehow, it sounded to me, although I may be wrong, that that was justifying the lack of diversity on staff. Now, I wanted to also bring up the situation at the law school with Derrick Bell, would suggest that the staff themselves are feeling uncomfortable and that those staff who are women or are minorities feel pressured or uncomfortable in this situation. And I would like you to speak to the situation at the law school and perhaps extrapolate further to the university, if you don't mind.
Right. Sorry, it wasn't that I, I don't think, I said that it had to do with the long term only, that is, it really is a more narrow issue, which is essentially accountability. That is, people with experience in the field who have done scholarship and teaching, who are colleagues and who must judge, work with, live with, and be colleagues for 20, 30, 40 years of people who are being hired, in some sense, they are the ones who have to live out the decision, just as in some larger sense the university does have to live out the decisions. That's what I meant, in terms of accountability. The decision has to be in their hands because they're the ones who have to live with it, and if because they have to live with it, they'll take the responsibility with extraordinary seriously, and they'll know the implications of whatever decision they make because they have to live with it. And it's not because people who don't live it out are irresponsible, it's simply that you have a different role, you have a different inevitably attitude, and you have a different level of experience if you don't have to live with a decision. That's all. And the law school thing, I'm sure that I can see there's a good deal of discomfort there, and I don't know that one can always do away immediately with discomfort just because it's there. There are obviously differences of view. The school, I believe, has six black faculty members and a faculty of something like about 60, not counting visitors, and I could be slightly off on that number, but I believe that was what I was told when I came in. That may or may not be a good track record or not, but it certainly shows, and I think it's also the largest number of blacks on the faculty of any comparable law school, but again, I'd want to check the data just to be sure, but I think it's somewhat different. My sense there is that it's focused particularly, at least in this circumstance, with respect to black women. There, I believe there are none. That is a perfectly valid concern. I actually asked for the so-called availability data, i.e., how many black women are there in university law schools at the moment, so that I could check. And at least the last readout I had, and I want to look again as of this fall, but as of the data of last spring, which I think was based on the previous year, in the top 20 law schools in the country, in the tenure ranks, there were only two black women. So if one's going to put all of the pressure on that one pressure point and say, we must have a black woman in order to, as it were, show our concern here, then that may or may not be a fair test, but all I can say is that if you did that with any other field, it would be a very difficult test for Harvard to meet, not just for black women, but for any particular category you chose of subgroup. Now, I want to look at the data again, but I believe the pool is not a large pool, and I think they have also- And I think they have also looked quite hard at the available people and have thought about it. I don't think they stop looking. And I think that what they've done on other fronts shows that there's some concern that's genuine. So I cannot cite you chapter and verse the way the dean of the law school might be able to, but I have discussed it with them. I've asked for all the information. I've gone over all the data myself. I am concerned about it. But I think that faculty can be sensitized. I think a dean can be sensitized. I think they are. I think thereafter, you have to work hard with them and let them work it out.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Maria Person, and I'm a doctor of chemistry. And it seems to me the major question facing this university and the society is the sharing of power. It seems that here, the power is concentrated in the hands of the faculty, the administration, perhaps the trustees. And my question is, are you fundamentally committed to distributing power from these groups to include also students and staff in such decisions as faculty hiring or the calendar system? For example, schools like Haverford College do have students on their faculty hiring committees. And another way, like the calendar system, why couldn't that be put to a democratic vote of the students and the staff and the faculty setting that?
Yes. Well, I guess I do have to confess a point of difference, that is, I don't think the administration has a lot much power, at least not the central administration. Otherwise, I would change all the calendars around and make them all one. But I don't see that I have much of a ghost of a chance of doing that myself. And if you actually put it to your test of a vote, my guess is you would end up with a lot of different calendars in every school, and you would be no better off in terms of university...
Well, what about one calendar proposed for all the schools, or one, three different calendars and have everyone vote on it? I mean, this can be done. It's not a logistics problem.
Yes, that didn't need to get us off. No, I think my fundamental point is that these are basically academic questions. Fundamentally, if you're designing the calendar right, you should be designing it with fundamentally academic values in mind. What's the best rhythm for teaching and research? What's the best rhythm for getting the job done? And fundamentally, I got to look to the faculty and the deans to give me that advice.
And you don't believe they should share power with the students in such decisions as faculty hiring? I mean, if you're talking about the longevity issue, untenured faculty will be here seven years, and, you know, some percentage of them will stay on. Perhaps the staff will be here longer than any of them, so they should make the decisions. I mean...
Well, again, I think these are, myself, academic decisions for which the institution is fundamentally accountable.
Someone's making the decisions.
Yeah, sorry.
And you're one of the people making the decisions.
I am.
And involved in this process.
I am.
So if it's going to change, I think you have to be in the forefront of it.
On this issue, I have to admit that I don't think it should change. That is, I think students should be consulted on these issues. I really don't think that we can have them involved in faculty hiring.
Let me jump in here. Let me jump in and say, I'm sure none of you are surprised, one would expect that a Harvard president would be intelligent, knowledgeable, and articulate, but it's nice also to see them frank and open and compassionate. Thank you very much for that.